Good morning. Recall us to meeting order. This is Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. Would you please join us to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Well, thank you. The board met in closed session this morning. Item 1A, direction was given. Item 2, claim was denied. And item 3A, confidential minutes were approved. With that, is there any members of public that like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Please come forward.
Good morning.
Need a pen?
Morning. My name is Joanne Hassan. I'm the Public Health Director, and we are here today to share some information about our upcoming Together We Can Community Health Fair. And we wanted to just let you know some stuff that's going on with that and to talk a little bit further about it, our two of our public health team members. And this is Tracy Dane. She is our coordinator, program coordinator, and this is Stacy Frame. And she is our public information officer and our social media extraordinary person. So go ahead, and I'll let them take it away.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. So this is our second annual Together We Can Health Fair. It is free to all attendees. We have over 46 booths this year, filled with health screenings. We have a mammogram van this year. We have oral health screenings. We have assessments done. We have Sutter Amador Hospital and Sutter Medical Foundation that will be out there providing diabetic screenings as well as blood pressure checks, et cetera. Lots of free activities. We have a bike rodeo, which will actually include helmet fitting and free helmet distribution to the kiddos. We're super excited. Last year, we had 28 booths. This year, almost doubled. And we're really looking forward to having just a huge attendance this year. And the event is Saturday, September 21st, from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Italian Picnic Grounds. So I want to see each and every one of you out there participating. You can even join the bike rodeo if you want to, so.
Sorry, I can't get there. I've got to be judging a rib cook-off in Pioneer Park for rotary.
Oh, you poor guy.
Sorry about that.
Priorities, Jeff. Come on.
Isn't it after? Isn't ours before that?
Oh, yours is exactly the same time.
It's at the same time, right. So here's the other little teaser, since he's doing the barbecue. We're actually offering a barbecue hot dog lunch. So this is all being provided by our wonderful sponsors, local organizations and businesses. We'll also have raffles. So there's all kinds of prizes, and again, generous contributions from our county and beyond, so.
But I will say, Tracy, that barbecued hot dogs don't compare to barbecued ribs.
I agree. But, you know, I look at it as like a delicious appetizer. Okay, and Stacy Frame is next.
Nice to meet you all. We learned a lot of things from the event last year for our second annual. We started out earlier, marketing. That's a lot of what I do with public health, is communications work. So we got a banner downtown. It's the first one that we've done downtown Jackson. We started social media early with partners and mentioned donors with each one to expand out our social media reach to folks, to really make sure that we're reaching the community members and that they can hear all about the wonderful things that we're doing. I think that was all of them. I think so. Well, you all have a flyer, so by all means, show up that day, hunt us out, except for you, and we'll see you there. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Any other members of public have an item they'd like to speak about? Board members? Well, also for the record, Frank Ax is not here today. He's on vacation, so he's not joining us. With that, looking for motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move. Second. I'll second.
Motion by Brown, second by Forster.
True.
Oh, you made the original motion? Okay. Well, then we have a motion by Crew, second by Forster. And we need a... All in favor? Need a roll call vote?
No.
Oh, okay. That's right. It's only Zoom. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries 401. Moving down, we have the consent agenda.
I did find one mistake on the 6B, the General Service Administration hanger, ground lease, and Chuck and Greg are checking on that. But I guess it's okay to approve that today, then?
It's okay to approve it. Just for the record, the issue is the verbiage for the rent. The number is correct, but the written words are incorrect. So...
Okay.
Because it's rephrased.
Okay.
So with that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Forster, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries 401. Moving down, regular agenda. First item is 4A, this behavioral health resolution declaring the week of September 8th to 14th, 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Week, and September 24th, 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Month.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's nice to meet you all. My name's Melissa Assilio. I've recently joined the Behavioral Health Department as Behavioral Health Non-Clinical Program Coordinator. I'm joined here today by Trixie Smith from Sierra Wind Wellness and Recovery Center. And we are honored to accept the proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month and Suicide Prevention Week on behalf of Amador Speaks. And I do believe we have at least one member of Amador Speaks in the audience. I want to invite them to stand briefly. Nexus, who is here today, and we recognize the support that they provide in suicide prevention and all of our coalition members in this space. Amador Speaks is Amador County Suicide Prevention Coalition dedicated to engaging the community in efforts to implement suicide prevention, education, and awareness to residents of our county. Amador Speaks is comprised of community members, residents, and representatives from social service agencies, public health, the medical communities, schools, and education systems, nonprofit agencies, survivors of suicide loss, suicide attempt survivors, veterans organizations, older adults, and members of the LGBTQ plus community. For several years, Amador County's suicide rate has been higher than the state. California Department of Public Health recently released the 2022 Suicide and Self-Harm data for our county. We currently are ranked as third highest in the state. We were previously ranked second in 2021. The data also revealed that Amador County continues to have the highest self-harm rate in California. September is suicide...
You said self-harm rate?
Self-harm.
Like cutting, trying to commit suicide, stuff like that?
Yes, sir. Not necessarily intending to complete a suicide attempt, but cutting those type of behaviors, yes. September is Suicide Prevention Month. This is a time for us to raise awareness of this urgently important crisis in Amador County. We use this month to shift community perception, spread hope and vital information to people affected by suicide. Our goal is ensuring that individuals, friends, and families have access to resources that they need to discuss suicide prevention and to seek help. In preventing suicide, it's important we all know how to recognize the warning signs, that we know how to engage and ask questions and refer someone to help who is struggling with suicidal thoughts. Amador County Behavioral Health contracts with providers to offer this training in the form of mental health first aid, and question, persuade, refer QPR to build these skills. We know that the antidote to suicide is connection and relationships. Simply listening and providing support can make a significance and even life-saving difference in the life of a child, adolescent, or adult. All of us can help save lives. Thank you for recognizing this month, and I want to pass the mic to Trixie, who will share some personal testimony and words with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. In honor of Worldwide Suicide Prevention Awareness Day today, I would like to tell you about a friend. I would like to honor my friend who is not able to be here today. And because he's not able to be here, I stand here in his place to speak for him and to speak about him, as I always will. His name was Seamus Peed, and his friends called him Randy King. And he grew up here in Amador County, and he went to school here, and he graduated from one of the local high schools. And he was a best friend to a prominent person in our community that we all know. I won't be mentioning any names today besides Seamuses. But when I met him, he was 43 years old, and I met him in the summer. I met him in the month of June in 2016. And I met him at Sierra Wind Wellness and Recovery Center. I wasn't working there yet. I was a volunteer, and he came there for services. And he was, he was an amazing person. He was so smart, and he was funny, and he was kind and gentle. He was one of the smartest people I've ever met. His IQ was so off the charts. He was always talking. There was always conversation around him. His mind was filled with information, and he was always thinking and sharing it and laughing. He made everyone laugh, and he was always laughing because his mind was just, he just, the way he looked at things and the way he thought, he could make a joke about anything. And most of them went over my head because I wasn't smart enough to understand them, but I laughed anyway because I knew they were funny if he was laughing. But he was, he was a joy to me. But he confided in me that he was very, very depressed, very depressed. He told me that he couldn't even remember how it felt to be happy. He didn't remember what happiness was. And many, many times, he cried about that. He was just so depressed. During the next few months, we shared a friendship, and I got to know him on a daily basis. But he also shared his past with me, and this is what he told me. He told me that once he was married, and he had no children from the marriage, the marriage didn't work out. He still loved her, but when they divorced, he got the two cats. Their names were Mitzi and Chewy. And so when he divorced, he lost his wife, and he lost his home. And so there was some loss there with his identity as a husband as well. But he moved in with his father, and he loved his father. And then shortly after, his father died. And when his father died, they came and they closed up the house and said, "You have to leave." And he couldn't take his belongings because he didn't have anywhere to take them. So then he lost his father, and he lost his home again, and he lost everything that he owned. But he still had the two cats, and he had a car. He was living in his car. Shortly after that, he lost his job. It's kind of hard to live in a car and take care of two cats and hold down a job. And then it's kind of hard to have a car if you don't have a job. And he eventually lost his car, too. When I met him, he was living in a broken down shed over on Elektra, next to the PG&E plant. And he had a bike. He would ride it to Sierra Wind each day, and he had a laptop computer. And he would download movies and videos and charge up his computer. So at the end of the day, in the evening, he could at least have something to take his mind off of his sadness and his depression. And he would play video games and watch movies. Well, we became friends, and I was mostly trying to help him. I felt, I loved him like a family member, like one of my own children. He would come over for dinner, and I'd cook for him, and we'd do his laundry, and he could take a shower. And I'd feed him, and then I'd take him back to that shed because he had his cats. He would go to church with us, and any kind of event or activity that we did as a family, we invited him with us. He was living outside in the extreme heat in the summer. And I can't even imagine how it would be to live outside and to just be sweating and hot all the time, and dirty. And I would go pick him up, and he would be dehydrated. There was a couple times I had to pick him up off of the ground. He was always covered with poison oak because those cats were running around out there. We couldn't keep it off of him. The oils were on their coat, and they would get in bed with him, and it would be on his clothing and his blankets. And I never had seen anyone with poison oak from their head to their toes. There was a few times when I had to take him to the hospital because his eyes were swollen shut, and it was in his scalp. Can't imagine being hot and sweaty and itchy as well. I would take him to my house and let him take a shower and get clean clothes, and I'd lay the blankets on the floor in the living room so he could lay in front of the air conditioner, at least be fed and cool and be able to rest. But he had to get back to the cats in the morning because they were his responsibility, and they were all he had, and he loved them. Well, soon, he moved across the street from the shed because he didn't feel it was right to live there because it wasn't his shed. So he ended up living in a tent across the street, and shortly after that, his cat, Mitzi, got hit by a car. He felt it was his fault because he moved across the street, and she was trying to cross the street to go back to where she was familiar. And that broke him. It broke his heart, and he was already so broken. It just truly broke him. During that week, his laptop broke. He had no money to get a new laptop. And then guess what? His bike broke down. And so now he basically had nothing. Well, I had to go that weekend to visit family in Chico, and I was, it's only there, by the time I went on Friday and on Saturday night, I got in bed, and I thought I would check the internet just to see. I know that he had borrowed a little tablet from someone, and he didn't post very often, but I thought I would see if he was on there. And this is what I read. This was October 15th at 11:30. "Killing myself tonight. Thank you to all the friends I've met in my life. Sorry if I wasn't a good friend to you back. Could someone please come get my cat, Chewy, and make sure he gets a good home, please? My friend Trixie knows where he'll be. Goodbye, guys. Sorry if I was ever an asshole or disrespected you in any way. This is totally my decision. I'm 100% responsible for my actions." Seamus, he felt like he was a burden to his friends by needing help that they weren't able to provide. I tried to be a friend and tried to get him help at Behavioral Health, but he gave up before that could happen. He always told me that I didn't have to worry about him killing himself because he was too afraid to do it. And I wanted to believe him, so I did. I, that, the next morning, I drove home. It was still dark, but as soon as the sun came up, I went looking. I went looking for him, and I didn't really know where to look, but I started where his tent was, and a friend of mine went looking with me. And I called the sheriff's department, and I said I wasn't going to mention any other names, but I have to mention Jeff Bellotti. He answered the phone. And I told him the story, and I told him I was going to go look for my friend, and I didn't know if I would find him, and I didn't know what I would find and where I was. And I didn't expect anything. I just, because all it was, was a letter of intent, you know? That's all we had. He called me back as I was looking, and he asked where I was, and he said he was sending someone, and he did. My friend and I, we looked, we looked through that area. We just searched it up and down. We started at one end, and we just walked back and forth. The grass was up to my thighs. We had the very first rain the night before, and it was wet. And I just, I didn't know what, where to look for him. But we covered the whole area within about an hour and a half. And by the time we were finishing up, coming up the hill, I saw the sheriff's department there. They had started where I was going to finish, and they told me, "Don't come up this hill, or you'll see him." They had found him hanging from a tree. He was still wearing the necklace that I gave him for his birthday when we had a birthday party for him with cake and presents, the children and I. Thank you for the opportunity to share Seamus's story, and thank you for the proclamation declaring September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Amador County, as a time to remember the lives lost to suicide, to acknowledge the many people who have experienced suicidal thoughts, and the many individuals, families, and communities that have been impacted by suicide. Because this declaration will enable us to raise awareness about suicide prevention, to reduce stigma attached to mental illness, and most of all, to spread the message of hope. Seamus was my kind, gentle, and funny friend, and I stand here to honor him today. I lived my life as an advocate for suicide prevention awareness to honor his life and the blessing of our friendship. The lesson he's taught me about the preciousness and fragility of life was a very hard price to pay, but one that will be used to help and possibly save the lives of others. Thank you for your declaration today.
Thank you. Any other members of public like to speak on this matter? With that, looking for motion approved.
All move.
Second.
Have a motion by Crew and a second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries 401. At this point, I'll go ahead and read it. We have here Amador County Board of Supervisors Resolution proclaiming September 8th through September 14th, 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Week, whereas the week of September 8th through 14th, 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Week. And September is National Suicide Prevention Month, a time which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country voice, join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And it is recognized that people of all ages benefit from common tenants of wellness such as access to effective health and behavioral health care, social support, and a sense of meaning and purpose. And attitudes and perceptions about aging, behavioral health challenges, and suicide have a significant impact on individual wellness and willingness to reach out for support and services that can alleviate distress. And cultivating and maintaining wellness is a lifelong pursuit, and individuals of all ages can benefit from integrating wellness into their daily routine to prevent or reduce the severity of a broad range of health and behavioral health problems. Knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to talk with someone that may be thinking of suicide, and reaching out to local resources or actions everyone can take for themselves, to care for themselves and others. And all Californians urge take action for suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides. And September 8th through 14th is recognized across the United States as National Suicide Prevention Week. And September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Month, providing the opportunity to educate and engage everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. Now therefore... Now therefore, be it proclaimed by Amador speaks, Amador County Suicide Prevention Coalition, on all members of the Amador County Board of Supervisors, on this 10th day of September 2024. That's the week of September 8th through 14th, 2024, be declared Suicide Prevention Week. The month of September be declared Suicide Prevention Month. This resolution was passed on the 10th day of September 2024. Would you, I'll come and present to you and if you want to take a picture, not at the time. This is Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, Project 341. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to adoption of Resolution Affirming No Changes to Property Tax allocations for Lockwood Fire Protection District and Amador Fire Protection District reorganizations. Mr. Damianni?
My name is Byron Damianni. I'm the executive officer for Amador LAFCO. And LAFCO asked that this be put on your agenda. It's in connection with reorganizations between Lockwood Fire Protection District and Amador Fire Protection District, which is proposing to annex Lockwood into Amador. In connection with that, the Cortez-Zy Knox-Hertzberg Act requires that an agreement be in place if there's any transfer or change in property tax distribution resulting from a project like this. In this case, there is no change because Lockwood does not receive any property tax revenue. But in order to comply with the law, we wanted to make it clear that the board is affirming that there will be no such change or redistribution of property taxes in connection with this project. And this is why we've asked this to be placed on your agenda.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yes.
Because AFPD does have a, what is it called?
An assessment.
Yeah, an assessment. Thank you. An assessment into their, you know, and that was an engineered assessment. So does that run into this part of the, of the system?
No, their assessment is a special benefit assessment and this addresses only property tax revenues. So because there is no property tax revenue received by Lockwood, there won't be anything to transfer to AFPD. Their assessment would extend into the new territory. Lockwood's current assessment would be terminated, but neither of those are based on property taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any members of public like to address this issue? CNN, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve? Second.
Have a motion by Forster, or by Brown, second by Forster. Sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries four, zero, one. Move down item 4C. This is Discussion of Possible Action Relative to the Letter of Opposition to Assembly Bill 98. And it says here, CSAC is urging the governor to veto this bill. And Supervisor Forster, do you want to?
I, I think the summary is, this is the best page to look at. I, I did read through the, the actual bill itself, but CSAC's recommending an opposed position on this for several reasons. As this states, it picks winners and losers among local governments, hampers valuable job opportunities and stifles economic growth. Local community-based solutions are now off the table. The bill was not well-vetted and the details matter to communities. Circulation element update alone will impose costly unfunded mandates for all local governments to comply with punitive enforcement fines and no enforcement measures or accountability on trucking routes and warehouse greening are included, leaving communities unprotected. There's unknown, this is coming from the Senate Appropriations Analysis, unknown major one-time local mandated costs likely in the range of tens of millions to potentially the hundreds of millions of dollars. And the biggest problem for CSAC is this all happened behind closed doors. There was not a public process vetting this. They excluded key stakeholders and now it's problematic gut and amend in the final days of the legislative session. So it's just, it's the worst kind of process to pass legislation. And they're, they're doing this more and more in the state legislature because of the supermajority that exists. So I, I'd like our board to concur with CSAC and take an opposed position on AB 98. It's just trying to take away, again, local control from counties and cities. I don't know why, if you looked at the support list, I don't know why some counties and cities are supporting this. It usually goes along party lines too, but there, there weren't many counties that were taking a support position. But there are a lot of unions that are taking the support position again and unions kind of run the show in Sacramento. So with that, if you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion.
Probably not. I don't see any members of the public, but I would like to talk about a little bit myself, Richard. I mean, if you ask me, it looks like, what you said is very true. They're taking away, you know, local land use authority. And I read in here a number of times, it says, "Costs shall not be a factor in determining operational feasibility pursuant this sub-paragraph." And I'm looking at how costs are going up as far as just the cost of living. And I think a lot of things people don't realize, government actions ultimately affect your pocketbook and your cost of living. And this is a perfect example where this is going to run the cost of stuff way up and it's going to make certain, certain areas, like you said, will be real winners. They can, they can maybe meet some of these requirements, but it's, what's really intriguing here is this will apply to any, any logistics use, but does not include the ones that are, a building is primarily served by rail, railroad to move cargo or, or cargo goods or products. So basically, I think it's meant to make Warren Buffett richer, legislation, if you ask me, and make the public poor. So I'm ready.
When my brother-in-law was alive, he worked for Boral and some other concrete companies. But the problem there, down in the San Diego and Imperial County area, is they had their facilities located in areas where they were encroached upon by housing, housing approved by the cities and counties. But continually, they were having to relocate facilities or just shut them, shut them down. And if you look at the unintended consequences that apply, so you, it becomes punitive at that point.
Well, yeah, and no, to me, it, it looks like it's a way big overreach. Some of the stuff they have is probably fine, but when you make, put it all together, it's a poison pill.
CSAC does a pretty good job, our, our lobbying staff. But when you're shut out of the process, and I think that's the biggest problem they have with it. Most of the, most of the talking, discussion was done behind closed doors. That's not the way our government's supposed to work.
And this should be, is something that should be done at a local level. And that's really, that's the, the real problem. You ready to make that motion?
So with that, I would make a motion that this board take a position of oppose on AB 98 and send a letter to the governor and the powers that be, our legislators, under signature of the chair.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous, four, zero, one.
Supervisor Forster, are you going to compose the letter?
I'll get it done.
Okay.
It's going to be short and sweet.
And now you got, uh, item, that would be a good letter, actually. I mean, it'd probably get some attention. You never get a letter like that, just said, "No."
Yeah.
And that's a thought.
Well, sometimes you get more, more attention by being direct, so.
Yeah. That might be a good letter, seriously. I'm moving down to item 4D. California State Association of Counties, CSAC, report by Supervisor Richard Forster relative to August 29th, 2024, CSAC Board of Directors meeting.
Yeah, I included the full agenda so you could see what was covered at this meeting, but CSAC regularly takes positions on propositions. Our board has taken a position on one of these propositions, so I'll go through them quickly. Prop 5, local government financing. This is a bill, the summary is constitutional amendment will reduce the voter approval threshold, threshold from two-thirds to 55% of general obligation bonds that fund public infrastructure, affordable housing projects and permanent supportive housing for persons at risk of chronic homelessness. And any associated ad valorem taxes needed to pay the interest or redemption charges or on bonded indebtedness. So the Government Finance and Administration Committee took a support position of this. The CSAC Board of Directors took a support position, CSAC Executive Committee, and then the Board of Directors followed suit. They normally refer to this as ACA 1, but the changes will create parity for cities, counties and special districts for voter approval thresholds already granted to school districts. If you might recall, there was another measure being pushed by the Howard Jarvis Association that was ruled by the courts as illegal. So that was taken off of the ballot. That would have required that any measure, and it was retroactive going back, would require a two-thirds vote. For various reasons, it was declared unconstitutional and removed from the, from consideration on the ballot. So moving forward on the next one, I'll try to cover these pretty fast, but Prop 35 that provides permanent funding for Medi-Cal healthcare services. This is interesting. It's a managed care organization, MCO tax, is a tax on managed care organizations based on health insurance enrollment in the Medi-Cal program and the commercial sector. The 2023 Budget Act with federal approval authorized the MCO tax from April of '23 to December of '26. And the MCO tax revenues offset general fund spending and the existing Medi-Cal program and support program augmentations. Again, the CSAC Health and Human Services Committee and the Executive Committee both took support positions on this. The thing I found interesting about this is, if you look on page 83 or 21 of 86, there's no changes to state tax revenues because there are no changes in the temporary tax on health plans. This came out of the Legislative Analyst Office. And increased funding for health programs because Prop 35 requires the state to use more health plan tax revenues for funding increases. What I found interesting here is, on the next page, it talks about the governor. The governor did not give his full support for this. In fact, you can interpret from what he said that he opposed it. And I kind of agree with him on this. It is widely understood that the administration is uncomfortable with the inflexibility of the measure and its potential to disrupt longstanding state policy on use of the MCO tax revenues. But CSAC Board of Directors did take a support position of this. The next one is Prop 36. You're familiar with this because of our DA Todd Reby and his association supporting this. Our board took a support position. There are some counties that were opposed to this because they feel, I think it was Prop 47, I believe that was the precursor to this, was adequate to take care of it. But Prop 46 or 47 was not adequate. What's that?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Prop 47 was not adequate because the governor and the legislature have recently passed, I think, at least three new laws in effect to take care of some of the problematic areas. CSAC Administration of Justice Committee, which I participated in their meeting, took a support position of this. The Executive Committee also took a support position, which surprised me, but coming to the board, I didn't know where it was going to land and the, the final vote was 34 yeses, nine nos and five abstentions to support the bill, to support the proposition. So that's good news. I sent that immediately to, in fact, I saw DA Reby that day and gave him that news. And also, the, it was surprising, the Latino Caucus of California took a support position on this. Because many supervisors are feeling the effects in their communities of these robberies that are taking place. And especially the people that go in and what, steal like less than $950 and they're, they just walk out the door and get a citation, if, if that. And many supervisors commented that in their retail establishments, they're hearing from owners and employees that they're so frustrated because now they can't even go stop a person, otherwise they'd be arrested.
You know, it, it is kind of out of control. I mean, it's a high profile, once everybody noticed, but was one of the, oh, football players, the 49ers got, I guess, shot at the, in Union Square, broad daylight.
Right.
Yep. Three o'clock on a Sunday.
But it's regrettable that the governor is opposed to this, Senate President Pro Tim, Mike McGuire is opposed to it, and Speaker Robert Rivas are opposed to it. So there's no other recourse but to take it to the ballot box to remedy this. And right now, it's polling very good and looks like it will pass. So we'll see. The last one of the propositions is Proposition 4, the Safe Drinking Water, Wildfire Prevention, Drought Preparedness and Clean Air Bond Act of 2024. The Ag and Natural, Environment and Natural Resources Committee took a support position, but many supervisors, including myself, opposed this because what it did was basically put money in to satisfy everyone. And when they do this, and we've seen it in the past, we get very little revenue out of this. We, if you have to apply, a lot of times it's matching and we don't have the matching funds to make it work. So I took an opposed position all the way through on this. It, it just doesn't work. These kind of things don't work for our community. We get very little out of it. Most of the money ends up in Southern California, to tell you the truth, or the bigger counties. The ballot measure would allocate $10 billion in state general obligation bond funding for climate-related programs. And the other reason I took an opposed position, I thought this board would appreciate, is $10 billion is a lot of money to put the state under indebtedness. Uh, CSAC Board of Directors.
I, I agree. It's, I mean, it's, it's not just $10 billion, $10 billion. You're going to pay the interest, it's not free.
That's right. So CSAC Board of Directors, though, followed the lead of their, of the committee and the Executive Committee and took a support position. And I imagine it'll state, most people, it's got a lot of things in here for everybody. But if they would define it and really break it down to the areas of most need rather than satisfy, you can look at the, the support list. I mean, it, it just, let's see how many pages it is. It's one, two, two pages of groups that supported. And that's three lines of, of groups on every page. So everybody's going to get a little bit of money and Amador County probably won't get much out of it. The last thing, I, I usually don't put this in, but wanted to put it in for your, so you know what's going on at CSAC meetings, is the County Council's Association of California, they have a, a member that's assigned to CSAC. It's Jennifer Henning, who's their, their litigation. the, their litigation coordinator. She, um, advises CSAC on, uh, different lawsuits going on around the state. We could give, um, give them a case and for consideration whether they would file an amicus brief or anything else in support, but on this one, the last two pages, I thought was interesting. The, uh, page seven on the bottom, Sheets versus County of El Dorado County, we should be watching that. It's pending at the Third Appellate Court, and, uh, the, um, County Council Association has filed an amicus brief. This has to do with, um... The fees that are charged when somebody goes through the process of, um, trying to do different developments. Um, this one... Is, uh, the United States Supreme Court ruled in this case that mitigation fees imposed on projects to offset traffic, and this one has to do basically with traffic and other impacts, are not exempt from constitutional requirement that such fees should have roughly proportional standards, and the court remanded this back to the state courts. So, it's still going on. This could affect the way mitigation fees are handled in the future. It's a, it's a big case for counties and cities. And the last one I wanted to point out, and this has a big impact, is the last page on the bottom, Whitehead versus City of Oakland. Um, they're again filing an amicus brief, but the plaintiff sued the county, the city of Oakland, for injuries he suffered after his bicycle hit a pothole during a fundraiser training ride, and both the trial court and the Court of Appeal ruled in the city's favor. However, and unfortunately, the California Supreme Court has granted review and will consider the following question. Does a liability release agreement between a bicyclist and the organizer of a recreational bicycle ride extend to the alleged negligent maintenance of a public road by a municipality named in the agreement, but not a party to it? So, that could conceivably have a big case if the California Supreme Court takes that on and, and rules in the plaintiff's favor. Uh, could change how we, how we feel about potholes in the future and how we, um, have to deal with those cases. That's all I have from that.
Well, thank you Supervisor Forster. Any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing then, thank you. Moving on to item four E, this review and possible approval of August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes.
I'd move approval with minor corrections.
Yeah, um, as part of that, I think we need to make a little change there, 'cause on that one, I'm trying to find it here, on the one item, um, the Planning Department, the public hearing, that would have been the, um, seat in mind. Uh, I recused myself from that item, and their minutes should reflect that, and I, I definitely didn't vote on it. That's the only change I have. So those changes, looking for a motion?
Remove approval with the modifications.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Forster and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries four zero one. And we have a public hearing scheduled for ten-thirty, so we'll come back at ten-thirty.
We have public hearing scheduled for 10:30. The first one is item 5A. This is Planning Department. Consideration of Planning Commission's recommendation to approve zone change, ZC-246-3. The zone change affects seven parcels to be rezoned from the X special use district to R1A slash single family residential and agricultural district. The current zoning, current X zoning is inconsistent with the land use designations adopted for the 2016, 2016 general plan land use element update. This APNs numbers 011-050-026 and 021-210-060 and 030-290-027 and 038-130-012 and 038-680-003 and 040-030-075 and 040-080-0011.
Good morning. Nicole Shepherd from Planning Department. The County of Amador is initiating zone changes for properties which have a zoning district classification that is inconsistent with the land use designation adopted with the 2016 general plan land use element. The parcels affected by this request are currently zoned X special use and this change aligns with the county's general plan and aims to ensure consistency and compliance with the state and local regulations. This item today includes two parcels within District 3 and five parcels within District 4 to be rezoned from the X special use zoning district to the R1A single family residential and agricultural zoning district. The Planning Commission, following a public hearing on August 13, 2024, recommended approval of the proposed sequo exemptions and the zone change to the Board of Supervisors. And along with this recommendation to the board included the reasons that are listed in the staff report for the recommendation and the relationship of the proposed ordinance to the general plan.
I didn't see any letters or communication. Did you receive anything?
We did not receive any written correspondence for these seven parcels.
Or emails?
Or emails.
I have an email from a resident out there on the proposed zone change. She's at 3370 Comanche Parkway North. She's in opposition to it. And her opposition, why? What is the point of this whole rezoning? How is it incompatible with the general plan? I feel it's something that's going on here that I'm not informed of. How's this going to affect our taxes, water and well usage? HOA, I've never been part of the HOA and don't intend to start now. And she's requesting, I respectfully request that my property be left out of this rezoning and remain Zone X.
If it is the property located within Comanche that is part of the different zone change that is currently going in front of the Planning Commission and will be brought before the Board of Supervisors at a later date. This item today is only for the seven parcels that are located within Districts 3 and 4.
And on those seven parcels, how would we know if 3370 Comanche Parkway North is part of that?
The APNs are listed both in the staff report as well as those property owners and surrounding property owners were notified of today's hearing.
Supervisor Forster, there is a Planning Commission tonight which has these, basically the same
Correct.
rezoning from X to R1A. And I think that email is related to the Planning Commission, not this.
It is to Amador County Planning. Doesn't say anything about Planning Commission, but.
I think it's just the timing that this came to the board at the same time that is going to the Planning Commission.
So you don't think this?
That was sent to me as Planning Commission correspondence for tonight's hearing.
Okay. So she would have to represent her position at that meeting then?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. That clears it up.
That comment letter has been included within the packet for that zone change.
Okay. Thank you.
How many of these do we have total? I mean, not just here, but coming down the pipeline?
Throughout the county, just for the X zone to be re-zoned, we're looking at about 500, a little bit more than 500.
500. Wow.
One thing I will say, it's a little bit, you can see it on your maps. It might be helpful if you maybe had a road address also in the information or something. You have 500 would be quite a bit because looking at it's kind of trying to figure out, well, whereabouts is that and what is that? And you're notifying all the owners and the properties?
All the property owners and then property owners within 300 feet of those affected properties.
Okay. Well, I guess at this time we'll open up the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment? Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Craig Barocco, Fodhill Conservancy. Just want to put in a word of support for this effort. We've talked about general plan implementation. This is part of that, implementing the county's 2016 general plan. X zoning is sort of a old acronistic zoning district that the county first used, you know, when it first implemented zoning in the 19, I think, 60s or 50s. It doesn't really, you know, allow, it allows for basically everything with a use permit. And in addition to a single family house by right, it's really not good planning, modern planning practice. And we look forward to implementing the rest of the removal of the X zone from the county zoning map and moving the county zoning map in compliance with the general plan, general plan's land use element at this time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
My name's Don Horverson. I have a parcel in District 3 that is X zoned. And although it's not one of the numbers that's on this notification that I received, possibly I'm within that 300 feet or whatever it is of one that is. The numbers are close. But my parcel is up in the Red Corral Road area. It's a two acre, two acre parcel zoned X. I bought it decades ago. It's a zoned X. I believe it has a certain value with the next zoning, part of the reason for buying it. This is the first I've heard about. If I've lost some, some letters or correspondence, that's my fault. But this came as a surprise to me.
Now, you did receive a letter, correct?
I did receive a letter for today's, for today's meeting. If there was anything beforehand or for the general plan, I don't recall ever getting anything before today. Like I said, my, my number is not on this list, but it's very close. My concern is that it's a Zone X on the property, however many that happen to be in the county, does have an added value to that property. I mean, you've got a use ability with that property. I don't see it being any different than someone having a R4. And you come along and say, well, you know, we're going to make you an R1 now. You no longer have that ability of that property that you bought. You still have to go through a permitting process and be approved for whatever you want to do on it. But it does leave it open for more options than just an R1A. So I would, I would hope that the county could adopt that no more X zoning, if that's the choice. And I have no problem with that. I would ask that they consider grandfathering in those that are existing that are asking for it. Maybe some people don't care. Grandfather in those existing, just like if I had an R4 property. That should be grandfathered in. Maybe you don't want to do any more R4s. That's, that's a choice. But having that property ahead of time that's already zoned X, I feel the value is being taken away from me. And I would ask the county to consider that possibly exempting some properties from that, not having to include all, all zoned X properties. I guess that would be about my main concern. And since my number is not on this list, although it's very close, I'm also wondering, does that mean perhaps the Planning Committee could tell me if there'll be another notice being sent out? I don't know what the, how it's being done as far as what batches of lots are, are being done, but.
Yeah, I would say talk to them and see if you're on that list would be my advice. And if you want to keep that zoning or something along that line, if I was you, I'd be talking to people at Planning, saying, hey, here's where, here's where I'm at and why and where do we go from here?
Okay. So take it all up with the Planning Department then?
That's the guy you want to talk to, right back there.
Okay.
And I think coming forward, talking to us is a good step, too.
What's that?
I think coming forward, just letting us know where you're at is a good step also.
Pretty good. Thank you for your time.
Because you know the, you know the old saying, nobody takes as good a care as you as yourself.
Well, thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment on this issue? And you received no letters in opposition from these parcels, correct? Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Agreed.
We have a motion to second the closed public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries 401.
Greg, can we do this in one action? There's a lot of things here. Should we do it independently? Like the first action is to?
Usually you do the, you take action on the environmental review?
Right.
And then separate then?
I'd move to, I'd move that the, to affirm the adequacy of the sequo categorical exemption.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries 401.
Next, I would move to approve the requested zone change and the ordinance to change the zoning of the affected parcels with the findings that are listed.
We have a motion by Forster, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries 401. With that, moving down to item 5B, the Supplying Department. This is a continuation of a public hearing for consideration of possible determination of mine status and financial capability of operator to complete reclamation obligations for a sit in mine pursuant to Public Resources Code 2773.1B, California Mine ID Number 91-03-0026, APN 008-140-016. In May of 2024, the mine operators bonding, company issued a notice of cancellation slash renewal of the required financial assurance mechanism for the mine reclamation effective October 1, 2024. Statutorily required financial assurance has not been renewed or replaced. Mr. Beatty?
Morning. Chuck Beatty with the Planning Department. I am happy and relieved to report that we did receive the required financial assurance for this mine. We received a certificate of deposit from the Bank of Marin yesterday afternoon for $20,000, which will cover the current cost of reclamation for the site. So the matter's basically been resolved.
Pretty much your mood issue, huh?
Now, you, Chuck, you said we got a certified check. Is that right?
Certificate of deposit.
Certificate of deposit. But I thought we needed a certificate from the insurance company or something like that.
He previously had a bond from an insurance company that was going to expire at the end of the month. So, but we can, the state will allow either a certificate of deposit, a performance bond, or a letter of credit.
That, so the money gets held at the bank under a certificate of deposit?
Correct. And it's, it's pledged to the county and to the Department of Conservation.
That's what I needed to know. Because last time you said the Department of Conservation, he said I can write a check. And you said we can't take a check because it belongs to the state, too.
Right. So cash deposit's no longer acceptable because both parties have to have access to it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
And Greg, I think on this, basically just, no action?
Yeah, no action.
Okay. Well, at this point, we are adjourned until?
Do you have one more?
I have one more.
I missed it somewhere. Well, there it is. Okay, I was looking for it. Couldn't find it. Item 5C. Thank you. I looked through, then I missed it. This discussion of possible action relative to a public hearing to consider adoption of the 2024, 2025 fiscal year proposed adopted budget.
Supervisors, the, the final budget and proposed final budget is there in front of you. If you open the public hearing and hold that and any questions you might have, I can answer. There's not significant changes between what we had approved and, and the adopted or the, the first go around and now. Any questions? Feel free.
No, I don't have any questions. Word members?
Open the public hearing.
Okay. Yep. This time we'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment on proposed budget? Seeing none, looks we have none up there. I do have one comment. Under the DA's budget, I had proposed a $50,000 reduction in DA's budget and it didn't, it didn't pass. And I think I'm back with the same proposal and like to know how the board feels about that. And if I have to make a motion, I intend to. So.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
The, under the, the first page of, under Raina Vista Landfall Project Number 6, $5 million, $11,000, that is what is budgeted. But a lot of that should be coming back with the revised estimates, right? Revised costs?
Yes, correct. And what is unspent will be returned to the state. We're borrowing to the state revolving fund to cover that. Those funds.
The other question, under the second page, number three, other, other charges, $37,796,000. That's, what does that entail, most of that? It's on the, this is the last page, number three, other charges under total expenditures.
Kim, you got?
I think Kim can answer that faster.
Kim Holland, Budget Analyst. I'm not sure where your, what page you're...
The last page. There's only three pages.
Oh, the resolution. I apologize.
It's just the other charges. I'm sure we covered it. I just want to be clear. I understand that the $37,796,000...
I don't have a copy of that in front of me. I apologize.
You want to...
Could I take a piece?
Other charges. Thank you.
The other charges reference the expenditure categories for, let's see, I believe grants, your district, the district funds that are dedicated toward, you know, for each individual supervisor. There's grants listed under there. All of that is captured under the other.
That's a long ways from $37 million, though. I wish I had a million-dollar discretionary fund, but I don't, so...
But, that's the combined, combined total for, for the entire budget. I can get you...
That's for all funds.
Yeah, I can get additional detail for you.
Not just your whole fund.
You said all funds versus general fund?
Yes, correct. The total there, the $151 million is all funds.
Okay.
But exactly what's in the other charges line, we can...
Oh, thank you.
All funds are sufficient, but I'd like to see a breakdown at some point, again.
I'll, I'll join you for a second. Tacey Onetto-Ruin, County Auditor. So, that does include all the charges for services, local revenue, local community corrections, and those, local revenues is $6 million of that. So, other charges for services that are expected to be paid out and moved into departments like the Sheriff's Office, mental health, so...
The grants, which are huge, so, okay. That helps.
And they can be, you can find more additional detail on the appropriations page. I'm sorry. Those were the copies I didn't have in hand.
That's okay. Just another...
Yeah, it's broken down the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely. And there is, ARPA charges account for $3.2 million of that, too. Kind of covers a wide variety, to be honest. It's a catch-all.
This year was also high because of the, the transfer from, or was that already accounted for, for the jail?
Yeah.
From the CCP, okay.
We did. Yeah, that was taken care of last fiscal year.
All right, that helps.
We're okay, yeah. No problem.
Thank you, Kim.
So, getting back to my original question, how's the board feel about reducing the whole budget item, DA, 2120 by $50,000? I think it's a place to start. Probably not enough, but I'd just like to just get started.
Supervisor Onetto, I have the same question I asked before. Is what specific funds were you going to? I'm just looking down the first, and the salaries and benefits are all under a contract.
Mm-hmm.
And you got services and supplies, and none of those total 50 grand, any one of them. So we're just going to take some off of, I mean, how, what plan were you going to?
I'd like to do his overall budget, and where he wants to take it from would be up to him.
I think we already looked at it once, and we made a decision. I think we move forward.
Okay.
For the approval of the budget.
Well, then, how about this? Can we do $10,000?
No. We looked at it.
Okay, a dollar? Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Crew, I'll give you the gavel, and I'll make, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the DA's budget by $10,000.
All right. Do we have a second?
I don't know. Not going to second because it sounds like you're just trying to get a pound of flesh.
Well, I just, I just, I'd like to see if we can get a dollar. I mean, I think it's something, and I'm not trying to cause issues, but I think it is an issue. We've got deferred maintenance in buildings. We've got deferred maintenance on roads, and a lot of our offices are minimal-staffed. Our surveyor office is part-time, so we're not going to cut nothing there. Many, many of the other departments, there's not much to cut. The only place we have much money is probation, DA, and sheriff. And I think the sheriff's budget might have been a little bit less than it was the year before. I think there's too much management there, so I'll be going back, back around for that again. I'm looking at our deferred maintenance in buildings, deferred maintenance in roads, and even if it's only a dollar, I think we need to get started. That's where I'm at.
Okay.
So I made a motion for $10,000.
You already made that.
And no, no second, so it dies.
Supervisors, I think...
I'd for lack of a second.
I think we forgot to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Um, I thought we did. Okay, well...
I don't know. I think...
Well, you're chairman. You want to take it then, so...
No, I, I turned back.
Okay, okay. Public hearing. You have a motion by, was it Forster? And a second by Brown to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries 401.
Now you would address any other changes.
All right. Are there any other, any other things we need to change or look at before we adopt the proposed budget?
Sure, I'd like to make my motion. Heck, I'll, I'll be good. I'll go down to, let's make it $1,000. I'd like to make a motion, take $1,000 out of the DA's budget.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Don't look at me.
I know.
Okay.
I had to look at you so I know what you're going to do.
Well, I'll make an alternative motion. A dollar.
This is, I, I understand we need to do something about our budgets.
I just want to make a point.
It's pure theater, Supervisor.
It is, absolutely. I won't disagree.
This is stuff that we need to be bringing up in April, not, not here at the last very...
You did.
I brought it up in April.
Yeah, you brought it up, and we discussed it. I think you're better off now challenging the DA to an arm wrestling contest, so... I would move to approve, hearing no second. I would move to approve the 24, 25 fiscal year proposed budget and associated resolutions.
All right, hearing no seconds on the previous motion. It died for lack of a second, and we have a new motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of adoption of the proposed 24, 25 budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right.
For reasons stated.
Motion carries 401.
No, 30.
301, that's right.
311.
311.
311, that'll work.
311.
Now, do we need four on that vote?
No, three, three during the regular budget process after this point going forward. Any changes is going to require four of its vote, so, yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, here you go. You're back in charge.
Okay. Well, we're adjourned until September 24, 2024, 9 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.